That's scary. This, we need to move the camera back there because this shows the right, it shows my belly. I need to... We'll bring you all up here. We'll have that camera on you and put it on YouTube.
Turn it this way.
Yeah. You gotta remember, I've got people who when I used to play wrestling football when I was first a peace officer, they said, "You were in perfect shape." Now you're all trying to save. Uh, well, I did that. I did that, so, uh... I don't know. I don't know now. I was feeling better, but now I'm kinda... She is a good cook. Well, and again, don't trust the skinny pastor. His people don't take him out to eat, his people don't like him. So, it's your fault. If I was, if you didn't like me, you wouldn't feed me. And cookies, we need to take those cookies home. Whoever, Linda, it's Linda Kinsey's fault. She makes the best chocolate chip cookies in the world. They melt in your mouth. Well, you know, I want to be a good steward of the kids. Is she recording?
Yeah, it's on.
Am I on? Testing. No, that's on.
Do I have to turn it up?
Yeah, turn it up. Testing, 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 testing. Testing, that's all muted. Testing, testing, what is it? It's not muted. Testing, testing, testing. Testing, testing. She muted, which... Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing.
Hello?
Testing, testing. All right. Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Well, praise the Lord, everybody.
Praise the Lord.
It is great to see each and every one of you out here tonight. Thanks so much for coming. Praise the Lord that last Thursday, especially before our revival was coming up, I was looking at when the snow was going to come, and the snow was supposed to come on Sunday. We need to separate you three over there. The snow was going to come on Sunday, and I said, "Just let us get through the Bible," and then it was going to come Monday, and then it was going to come Tuesday, and then finally they were saying it was going to come today, and I thought, "Oh, it's the second week of discipleship," and God just said, "No snow this way," so we praise Him for that. Ken?
I saw a channel live tonight that showed the snow right over us with the big period.
All right.
You can see the night sky.
All right, excellent. Hey, prayer, prayer works. I believe it. So, I do want to encourage you, if you were unable to attend any of the services of the revival or even you missed one, if you're able to come to one or two, I encourage you, go back and watch the services. Pastor Mitch Birch did an incredible job, brought the Word of God in a powerful way, taught us some great, great, great stuff, very applicable, very timely, very applicable. And so that is on our YouTube channel. Make sure that you watch that because it's really good stuff. He wanted me to also share with you all a thank you, because he really enjoyed being here. And sometimes when you speak at churches and congregations and other things, sometimes it's a chore, but he really, he really enjoyed it, was blessed by you all, so thank you for that. A great man of God, and we're very blessed. So if you, if you were able to see all the wonderful, if you missed one or missed two or whatever, go and watch them, because I think you'll be blessed and will be blessed. All right, well, I'm going to open up a little word of prayer, and this is kind of a shorter, a shorter week after I kind of pounded you, and then I give you a little break this week, and then after that, we start running. So do your, be doing your finger exercises, you know, so you can get that, get that, take care of it. But let's go ahead and go to the Lord in prayer. Father, thanks for this day. Thank you for this time. I thank you for my brothers and sisters. We just praise you. You are God. Thank you again for Pastor Mitch being here with us, and Lord, we thank God that he got home safely. Lord, you are so good to us, and we just want to dig into your word to see what you have for us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. All right, well, we're going to take just a few minutes to kind of do some housekeeping, logistical kind of stuff. If you know someone who had signed up and does not have a book yet, we do have some extra books. If you know someone who did not sign up and needs a book, then let us know too. We still have a few extras, and we can go ahead and get that. We have one more box. There's a couple more back on the table, and then there's one more box that is left, and so we can, and if we need to order some, that's okay as well. It's important. The other thing again, and I mentioned it last night, or last week, and I want to again, I highly recommend that you use a journal, again, because it is really hard to write in the pages, and especially then when you flip them over, it's kind of tough as well. So I do encourage you to get a journal if you prefer. And also, I want to encourage you, if you're comfortable typing, do that, because there is a lot of writing. So what I'm going to do right now, those, I'm going to kind of ask you, turn over to you, questions you have.
Where's the books I have?
They're right there.
Oh, she found them.
There you go, okay?
Thank you, sorry.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Any, about how long has it taken you all?
About six hours a night.
I think that's an exaggeration. Six hours. We will get to in week three exaggeration. Just kidding. So you're okay now, no?
It depends on the lesson. When you're doing it seven times, yeah, that takes a while.
Okay?
Just wait. I actually did day four of like sixth, or fourth or fifth week. It gets special then.
And again, as you're writing, you're saying, "I love my pastor." But when did we get to it, the six months, when I say turn Amos, and you're like, right there, you're going to say, "I love my pastor." So Pastor Mitch said it great. You gotta, you gotta work. If you want to grow closer to God, it takes work. There's a price. And so, please, please hang on to that, but seriously, about how long is it taking people?
I don't know.
About an hour?
About an hour.
About an hour, okay? Okay? Forty, forty-five minutes?
Three hours if you get interrupted.
How, if you get interrupted?
If you interrupt them, thanks for like for now.
Okay, okay. Is anybody, and you don't have to share if you don't want to, but is anyone doing it as a couple devotion?
We remind one another to do it.
Okay, okay. I encourage you, I've had couples that have done, one wrote out one scripture, the other one wrote out another scripture, and what they did is they worked on it together. If you don't write it out, you don't get as much, again, because it's that, it's that mind and that physiological writing out that's a little bit. Is anybody doing family devotions with it? I've had that. I've had that happen before. We've had people do them as a family. They sat down and from little, little bitty kids, they, and they actually had the kids take turns writing out things like that. So there's, there's options. So there's options. Now, I do want to encourage you, again, some people say, you know, "I'm really doing a lot of writing." It is a lot of writing. And some people say even in the verse, you know, the verse has four lines, and really I could see the main point. Is this is for you, what's best going to help you get into the Word of God? And what's best going to help you draw closer to God? So I encourage you, kind of be as accurate as you can, but you don't have to write out every single word or dot. So don't get caught up in that, in kind of like a legalism. Don't get caught up in that. The point is, are you getting the main point? So before we go ahead and get running, any other questions, please? Do you have any? There's no wrong question? There's no bad question?
All right, I'm going to feel a little dumb, but...
No, don't feel dumb.
I know John from Matthew, Mark, Luke, and John.
Right.
And then how come I have First John, and is this the same John?
It is at the end of the New Testament, there's a First, Second, and Third John.
I found him, but I'm like, is that all the same person?
Actually, yes. The writer was the same person, yes.
So how come they're separated like that?
Because John is in the First John, the Gospel of John is in Matthew, Mark, Luke, and John, and that's the four Gospels. That starts out. And then later is when he's exiled on the island of Patmos, and then he writes First, Second, Third John. So they were different time periods?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And just kind of fascinating, the four Gospels, Matthew, Mark, and Luke are called the synoptic Gospels. And the reason it's called synoptic, because synoptic in Greek means the same. And when you read Matthew, Mark, and Luke, there's a lot of interconnection, and so, but John is kind of a little different. John follows a different format. So the Gospel of John is a little different than Matthew, Mark, Luke, and John. Good, good question though, as far as if someone just gets saved, or if someone is kind of starting to get into growing in the Lord, I encourage you to go through John. Go through John. Start at the Book of John, because that's really, that gives us a snapshot of who Jesus is. So please, if you're just saved or just getting into the Lord, and you go into Genesis, you know, you're going to start reading about, you know, the animals getting killed, and this and that, and you're going to say, "This doesn't make any sense." Please, 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 if you're just saved, or you know, you're just growing in the Lord, please, please, please do not read Revelation. I know that's the first book. "I just got saved yesterday. I want to read Revelation." Don't do that, because people who've been saved 150 years don't understand Revelation. And people who are experts argue. So I'm just trying to give you little pointers. Go to John. Go to John, and then if you want to get into a little more doctrine, if you want to get into more a little meat, then Romans is a good one. So I encourage people to read John, and read the rest of the Gospels, and then go to Romans if you're, if you're just doing that, so. All right, well, keep with it. Keep with it. Obviously, there is going to be more writing, because we're adding three books of the Bible a week, and also a memory verse, and so there's going to be more writing. By the end of the six months, your forearms are going to be like Popeye. You know, your kids racked up, and you're going to grab them, they're going, "Oh," like Darth Vader grabs hold of you, and so hang with it. Please hang with it. It's something I want to strongly encourage you. Do it every day. Do it every day, because it's a daily discipline. If you do miss a day, don't beat yourself up. I encourage you to take it one step at a time, one step closer. The beautiful thing about YouTube is that we're going to have a separate library for the services, for the lessons, that you're going to be able to get on there and connect on there. So don't beat yourself up, and don't quit. It's very easy, once you get behind a little bit, to say, "Well, I'm just done." And this is going to be something that's going to become part of our DNA of our church. It's going to be something that we're going to be, we're going to keep doing, and when someone new starts coming to the church, we're going to say, "Hey, we want to get you into discipleship," and we're going to have it continuously going when we get finished. So it's that important, but stick with it, stick with it. If you do miss a day or two, pick it back up, and just, just please don't quit, because really, when you look back, I've had people who've said, "This has been one of the greatest spiritual journeys, experiences I've had," and so, but it's discipline. It's discipline, and it's doing work. All right, well, let's go ahead and look at week two. And week two, again, some of this in the first six weeks. The first six weeks, we call starting the journey, and as we look at it, some of it is very basic. The lesson tonight is very basic, and, but it's important that we kind of review the basics and get there. Some of you, this will be new for you, so this is great. Before we do that, though, someone, all of us quote Romans 10:9. Let's quote it together. "That if you confess Jesus is Lord, and believe in your heart, and God raise him from the dead, you will be saved." Excellent, excellent. All right, excellent. First three books of the Bible are?
Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus.
That's the easiest time. After that, it gets hard. After about the fourth and fifth month, we start out Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, dude, wrong me, and then we get to Amos. We start to get a little quieter, so. There are some errors in the book as well, and we're going to point that out. I had pointed out to me, and there's no way you found them yet, except for one of us did, thankfully, and so hang on for a long time. We'll do it. All right, let's go ahead and look at, in week two, week two is baptism. And so I looked up in the Bible dictionary, the Unger's Bible Dictionary, if you are a Bible, yes, sir?
I'm 35.
Thirty-five, thirty-five, yeah. I, and also, I am going off of my, what is in my computer, and so part of that, I was just sharing with some of you earlier, the publishing process was really kind of very interesting, because you argue about every little thing, every step away. I'm going off mine, so I may read something that may not have the same exact wording. This is, you have the published edition. I'm having the pre-published edition. Here, I am trying to double-check it to make sure it lines up, but if I say, well, mine says, you know, this, it's going to say the same thing, just maybe a little different words, so. I do encourage you to, if you are wanting to study a little bit deeper in the Bible, get a Bible dictionary. There's two really good ones. The best ones out there are the New Unger's Bible Dictionary. You see that one underlined? That's a great one. In my opinion, the best Bible dictionary that's out there is called Harper's Bible Dictionary. Mine has a red cover. I don't know if they're still publishing them in red covers. The Harper's Bible Dictionary, in my opinion, is the best one out there, and so if you want to, if you're reading in the Bible and you want to read, "Well, what'd they do at Pentecost?" Boom, you look up Pentecost, and it goes right through it. So if you really want to get deep in the Word of God, you need to have a Bible dictionary. And you can buy them at any store or anything like that, bookstore, of course. So New Unger's is a good one, and also Harper's is. So the New Unger's Bible Dictionary is baptism, is because we talked last week, we got to get saved, we talked about salvation all week, and so what happens after this? Well, let's look at baptism. It says, "The application of water as a rite of purification or initiation, a Christian sacrament," and the word in Greek is baptismos, and the word is baptizo, which means to dip or to immerse. And so we see that that's kind of the definition. Now, this is very important. Baptism does not save us. We are only saved by grace, because we've repented of our sins, and we receive the forgiveness of Jesus. If we don't first repent, but proceed to be baptized, we've not accomplished anything than just getting wet. You would be surprised at how many times I'm approached, and someone will say, "I want to get baptized." And I'll say, "My first question is wonderful, my first statement is wonderful, my second statement is why," or it should be a question, "is why." And they'll say, "Well, I want to be saved." I say, "Baptism ain't going to do it." You have to do the step before, to Romans 10:9, confess your sins, believe in your heart, and so that's what we need to do, is baptism does not save you. Now, some people buy into it. You'd be surprised, because I get approached often, you know, "I gotta get baptized, I gotta baptized," and I always say, "Okay, there's a step before that." So number one, we must repent before we're baptized. Acts 2:38, Peter replied, "Repent and be baptized. Every one of you in the name of Jesus Christ, who forgive us your sins, and you receive the Holy Spirit." So first thing we have to do before we get baptized is repent. Even though baptism doesn't save us, it's very important. When we get saved, we're turning our lives over to God, we should be baptized. And it is a very crucial, extreme step in our journey with the Lord. So I want to encourage us all, and as you go through this, I want you to really reflect on your baptism experience, but also, maybe you haven't been baptized. Some people got saved a while ago, didn't get baptized, and so be thinking about that, because it's very important. Number two, we're commanded to be baptized. And Matthew 28:19, "Therefore go and make nations, disciples of all nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit." Mark 16:16, "Whoever believes and is baptized will be saved, but whoever does not believe will be condemned." So when we're baptized, we're making a public statement. We have chosen to follow Jesus Christ. I mean, we are making a public proclamation that we have been saved by God. This next statement is one that I heard years ago, but I love it, and you'll hear me often say it when we talk about baptism. But baptism is an outward expression of an inward change. So something has happened in us, and we are making a statement, baptism. I asked a lot of times, "Well, you know, Pastor, well, you," and I've actually done this, baptized in pools, lakes, oceans, rivers, streams, at home with people, and sometimes people will say, "Well, I don't want to be baptized in front of people." When we're baptized, we are making that public proclamation. We're making that public statement, and so that's what we need to understand. Matthew 10:32, "Whoever acknowledges me before," when we're baptized, we're making that statement. "Whoever acknowledges me before others, I'll acknowledge them before my Father in heaven." So when we're baptized, we're actually saying, "I am Jesus Christ's, I belong to Him." When we're baptized, we're also connecting with the family of God. We're joined a multitude of who believe that Jesus Christ is the Son of God. We do not do Christianity alone. We are the collective church. We are the collective corporate body of Christ. And that's what we need to, we need to understand. It's not about me, it's not about you, it's about being the church. And so what happens, and Pastor Mitch did a phenomenal job of preaching about this, what happens sometimes is ourself, ourself pops up, and that takes away from the collective. And that's why we need to be a people who understand that there's a body of believers. So we're all together. 1 Corinthians 12:13, look at this. "We're baptized by one spirit to form one body, whether Jews are Gentiles, slave or free, and we're given one spirit to drink." So when we're baptized, we're making a statement that there's one church, and the church is not a building made up of brick or mortar. The church is not a geographical location that can be found on a map. The church is the believers of God. We are the church. That's why when people get offended, "Pastor, I'm leaving the church," I say, "I'm sorry, you're going to hell." Because if you leave the church, you're going to hell. You are the church. The church is the group of believers that makes that up. And so what we do is baptism, it pronounces that we're the church, and that Ephesians 4:5, we have one Lord, one faith, one baptism. So that's kind of the introduction, and what I say is, if you've been baptized, take time to reflect upon it. I would even encourage you, and each week I want to give you some, some little extra stuff to dig into, if you so desire, but I would, extra, yeah, I'm giving you a little, little extra. If you want to, I would encourage you to write down your baptism experience. I would encourage you to write down what you felt, what it meant like, because you'll relive that. And I encourage you to do that, if you want to. If you're saved and you've not been baptized, I encourage you, take that next step and draw on closer. We'll do baptisms, really, we do baptisms here when, when the Lord leads us, and when people start, people say, "Pastor, I haven't been baptized," or someone comes to the Lord, "I need to be baptized," and so let's look at that. If you've not been baptized, then I would strongly, and you know the Lord Jesus Christ, you've asked to forgive us your sins, and you're in a relationship with God, then I strongly encourage you to be baptized, and so if you have been baptized, take some time. Take some time. Question I get is, "Can I be baptized again?" There's nothing in Scripture that says you cannot be baptized numerous times. You really don't need to be, but if it's, if it's something that will help you in your walk with the Lord, that's fine. I mean, you can never be baptized enough. And so I've had many times, people have fallen away from the Lord, came back to the Lord and wanted to be rebaptized. That's okay. That's okay. So there's nothing wrong with that, but that's, that's a personal choice. All right, so what key point are you, yes, sir?
Most people baptized as a child. Never really meant anything to you then, you know what I mean?
We're going to talk about that. Yes, sir. Good, good, great question, and we're going, great, great question. We're going to hammer that. We're going to talk about that. Great question. Excellent question. So what key point are you taking from this lesson? And again, you know, the format that the discipleship is, I really, for, this is a process of about three years of study, and finally the Lord's saying, "Quit, quit looking around. You and I are going to do it." I'm like, "Oh." And so then I spent about six months saying, "Is it, is it multiple choice? Is it essay form? Is it short answer? What, what form?" And he said, "I want people in my word." And that's why you're writing. You are writing the Word of God. And that's why if you don't agree with the word I say, but you're getting the Word of God, that's my job, is to get you into the Bible. And so there's power in that, so there's got to be, you got to learn of key points somewhere, because it's, it's the Word of God. How are you going to apply that to your life? And then, I'm glad you're all seated, write out the first six, six books. Oh, you're kidding. Hang on, we only got 60 more after that. You know, we're like, 1% of the way done. Only 99% to go. And then you're giving me another memory verse. You can memorize. You can memorize. You all are going to get home tonight. You're not going to call me and say, "Pastor, I'm on Jefferson. Where do I go?" You're going to get home tonight. You all, we all know where our refrigerators are. Put up that memory verse on the refrigerator, and every time you want to open it up, say that memory verse 10 times, you're going to be going, "Therefore confess your sins," you're going to memorize that verse. So the next verse, Matthew 28:19, "Therefore go and make disciples of all nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit." And so again, you're going to be writing that out. Write that out three times. And then, very important, pray with one statement on how big God is. At lea, let me rephrase that. At least one. How big God is. God, we right now are in a donut of no snow. That's a God thing. Wow, God, you are in charge of the weather. Incredible. And so, and then something you're thankful for, Dave. Something you're thankful for, Dave. And there should be something, so. All right, day two. What does baptism represent? Baptism is symbolic enactment of what's happened in our lives. When we're baptized, we see in a tangible, external way what's happened to our souls. Those are some big words, but we get, we get them into them. Baptism is a symbolic cleansing of our sin. Acts 22:16, it says, "And now what are you waiting for? Get up, be baptized, and wash your sins away," calling on His name. So when we get baptized, it's as if we go down into the, we're going to get into the second watery grave, and we're resurrected in our sins. Our sins have been washed away. And we drain that baptism pool, and it goes, and it disappears. It's gone. And that represents how our sins have been forgiven by God. Baptism allows us to identify with Christ. Just as He died and went to the grave for three days, we're going into a watery grave, and we're being raised again. That's if the preacher likes you or not. He keeps showing underneath. Raised again. I just, I just read, woo, I just read an article three days ago about a bizarre baptism where the pastor jumped on the people, and I, I don't agree with that, but that's kind of what they do. And so you're literally going into a watery grave, you're being raised again, and it represents, baptism represents, we're dying to ourselves, and we're resurrected in Christ. So we're buried, but we don't stay buried. Hmm, sounds like someone else we know. Colossians 2:12, "We've been buried with Him in baptism, in which we were raised with Him, through our faith and the work of God, who raised Him from the dead." So baptism is symbolic of being dipped into a watery grave and then coming up. When we're baptized, we're also making a public proclamation or promise to God, just as we say in Pledge Allegiance to the Americans, like baptism is a public pledge, we belong to God. And so 1 Peter 3:21 says, "Water symbolizes baptism that now saves you, not the removal of dirt, but the pledge of a clear conscience before God, toward God." It saves you by the resurrection of Jesus. So when we are getting baptized, it's like we're saying, "I pledge allegiance to the Lord. I am giving you all of my life." Baptism also represents that we're making a commitment to God. So in order to truly live for God, you need a supernatural strength, and that strength can't be mustered using our own might or power. We need that strength. So baptism, after we've been baptized, we're saying, "We belong to you, Jesus." Galatians 3:27 really is cool. "For all who have been baptized in Christ, you have clothed yourself with Christ." Isn't that kind of a great image? Is that we're actually dressing ourself with Jesus. We are taking Him, and He is covering us. Baptism symbolizes powerful insights to know more of the Lord. It's not just about getting wet. It's about entering into deeper communion. So again, what key point are you taking from the lesson? How are you going to apply? Maybe, maybe you've thought, you know what, I never thought about baptism as, as I pledge allegiance to God. Maybe I've never thought about baptism as that is a watery grave, and now I'm raised. And so how's that? Write out the first six books of the Bible three times. Pastor, that's 18.
Oh, it's going to get worse.
Not worse, it's going to get longer. And then you're going to notice we have the memory verse, and some of the words are taken out. And yes, every time you see Roger Johnson says, "No, you don't get a discount, because I didn't write the words." because I didn't write the words." And so go ahead and you fill those out. When you pray, begin with stating how big God is and when you're thankful. Baptism, day three. Baptism wasn't theoretical, or something we should get around to do if we have time. Those who are faithful in Scripture model baptism. And throughout the page of the Bible, we'll see example. John the Baptist impacted the world. John 1:24-28. Again, that's four verses, that's a lot to write. If you just want to kind of condense that to what you want to learn from, that's okay. Don't, don't be legalistic about it. Get the point, get the main point. It says in John 1:24-28, "Now the Pharisees who had been sent questioned him. Why do you baptize if you're not the Messiah or Elijah the prophet? And John replied, 'I baptized with water; but among you is one who stands, and you do not know; he is to come after me, the straps of whose sandals I am not worthy untied.'" This all happened at Bethany on the other side of Jordan, where John was baptized. So again, don't feel compelled that you have to write every single word if you want to. That's fine. I encourage that, but again, do what's best going to draw you closer to God. Now, Jesus was baptized, and He did this in example. Matthew 3:13-15. Jesus came from Galilee to the Jordan to be baptized by John. John tried to deter Him. "I need to be baptized by you, and you come to me." Jesus replied, "Let it be so now. It's proper for us to do this to fulfill all righteousness." And so if Jesus is going to be baptized, then we need to be baptized as well. Luke 3:21, when all the people were being baptized, Jesus was baptized too. And as He was praying, heaven opened up. The disciples of Jesus baptized believers. John 3:22, after this, Jesus and the disciples went to the Judean countryside, where He spent time with them and baptized. John 4:2, although in fact, it wasn't Jesus who baptized, but His disciples. So at that point, the disciples were the ones who were baptized. Number four, Philip baptized Ethiopian eunuch. Acts 8:38. "He gave orders to stop the chariot. Then both Philip and the eunuch went down into the water, and Philip baptized him." Number five. "The Apostle Paul was baptized after he surrendered his life to the Lord on the road to Damascus, Acts 9:18." Immediately, something like scales, this when he was baptized, fell from Saul's eyes. He could see again, he got up and was baptized. And so he is following that. And then Paul begins to disciple, begins to baptize believers. Acts 18:7-8. Paul left the synagogue, went next door to the house of Titius, Judas, worshiper of God. The synagogue leader and his entire house believed in the Lord, and many of the Christians who heard Paul believed and were baptized. And so what we're doing is, is we're showing how this is a continuation of faith. 1 Corinthians 1:13, "As Christ divided, was Paul crucified for you; were you baptized in the name of Paul." And so what that's, that is pointing out to us that Paul was saying, hey, baptism is not about me, baptism is about the Lord. So it's humbling and exciting when we think of those who've been baptized before us and those who've been baptized after us. One of the neatest gifts that Janine got for me after I got my doctorate, it's in my office, and you're always more than welcome to go see it. But it's a powerful painting, and it says, "The Legacy." And it's a pastor preaching in the pulpit, but around him are all the saints. Moses, and Elijah, Paul, and of course, Jesus, and the angels. And that just reminds me, it helps me to know, when I step into a pulpit, man, all the forces of heaven are there with us. And all those who've been faithful and who preach, and all those when CJ pluggers the dust in the earth, or wherever Janine puts me, you know, probably makes me up in bed, or I don't know. And then, and whatever happens with me, is, is, there will be others to go on. But isn't that so neat to, all of our loved ones, we're surrounded by a great kind of what? Witnesses. Wow. And so when we're baptized, when we're thinking about baptized, being baptized, man, that's, that's a continuation of Jesus, Paul, the disciples, John the Baptist, all of that. Isn't that so cool that we're in that? So, okay, it's humbling and it's exciting. What key point are you taking? How are you going to apply it to your life? Write out the first six books of the Bible four times. Write your memory verse, there's more words missing. That's all right, you've got them down. You've got them. Baptism, number, day four. How and when should we be baptized? We're going to get to day four. There are those who believe that infants should be baptized. Now, they believe so because there's scriptural passages where the entire household was baptized. So when the head of the family received the Lord, everyone got baptized. Even though the infant hasn't made professional faith, even though the infant can't say, "I believe", the tradition is to baptize in the whole community faith. One thing you're going to find in the discipleship too, is I'm going to say, "This is what we believe, this is what Scripture says." But I'm also going to give you insight why other faith traditions do other things. Because that will help you to understand, well, why do they do this? Or why do they do that? So we want to understand. We may not interpret the same, but we want to understand kind of why people think. So here's some verses of why do people practice infant baptism? Here's why they believe that. Acts 16:15, when she and her members, this was Lydia, of course, were in the household, were baptized, she invited us to her home. And she said, "If you consider me a believer in the Lord," said, "Come and stay at my house," and she persuaded us. So when Lydia would, came to the Lord, Lydia was at the side of the river by Phillip High. When Lydia came to the Lord, her whole household was baptized. And so what they believe, what people who believe in infant baptism, they believe that an infant, we have an example here. We believe that an infant, we, they believe that the infant is baptized into the community. So that's why infant baptism takes place. They use Acts 16:15, 1 Corinthians 1:16. Yes, I baptized the household of Stephanus. Beyond that, I don't remember if I baptized anyone else. So what happened back then is if I would come, when Paul's traveling around, spreading the gospel, if I would come to the Lord, my wife, my kids, grandchildren, anyone in that household would be baptized. So that's where infant baptism comes from. And what that statement was, is as for me and my house, we will serve the Lord. And so that's where infant baptism came in, is they are baptized into the family of God. Now, we in the Church of God, we believe that only believers should be baptized. And the reason is, first, we believe a person should repent and then be baptized. Go back, remember Acts 2:38, repent and be baptized, we talked about it day one. And so that's kind of where we are at. Great question was asked, what happens if I was baptized as an infant? And am I going to get to heaven and God say, "Oh, you weren't baptized as an adult. You're not getting in." He's not going to do that. But most people who are baptized as infants say, "I feel according to Scripture, and I want to be baptized as an adult, and that's normal." And I recommend that if someone comes up to me and says, "I was baptized as an infant. Should I get baptized as an adult?" I say, "Yes." Will it keep you out of heaven? No. But I think it's that public statement, that public proclamation. I am in this, this community of faith. And so for those who were baptized as infants, I do recommend that you are baptized as a believer. And again, that's a personal choice, but I feel, I feel that that's kind of most scriptural. Well, there's three different, three major different types of baptism. There are fusion, aspersion, aspersion, and immersion. Woo, say all those three times fast. A fusion, and this is what's so cool, I'm seeing this more and more. But a fusion is a word that's coming from a Latin word, comes to us from a Latin root, meaning to pour on. So a fusion is where the water is actually poured over the head of the individual. And many who practice infant baptism use this message. They usually hold the little guys or little gals and pour it over the head. I'm starting to see this used more and more in African-American communities. Matter of fact, I've been to several, a couple of years ago, I went to several African-American congregations that were, that were ordating their people, and they were practicing effusion. So I've seen that a little bit more, very interesting. It's very scriptural. 1 Samuel 10:1. Samuel took a flask of olive oil, poured it on Saul's head, and kissing him, saying, "This is the Lord anointed you, ruler of inheritance." So that's one form of baptism, is a fusion, is the official word. And that's kind of where they pour over. A lot of times, they'll have a little pitcher, and, not a picture, a pitcher, and they will pour it over. So I've seen that. The word aspersion comes from us from the Latin word to sprinkle. And aspersion is where the water will be sprinkled on a person from the hand of a person baptized in the individual, or from a container. This is also, this is a familiar way of people that have baptized babies. Maybe some of you have seen that. Usually, many times, the Catholic Church baptizes babies, Methodist Church, Episcopal, some Lutheran. And so a lot of times, I've seen that, that they have done that, and that sprinkling baptism by sprinkling is scriptural. Ezekiel 36:25, "I will sprinkle clean water on you, and you will be clean. I will cleanse you from your impurities and from all your idols." Now, where are we at, whereas we are at as a Church of God? We believe people should be baptized by immersion. And immersion is where you're completely taken down to the water, and you're brought back up. You get wet from the top of your head to the soles of your feet. You get all wet. Now, there's different practices concerning immersion. Very, very interesting. Anybody have a Church of Brethren background? Okay? The Church of Brethren is kind of interesting, because what they do is, is they, they don't want to take anyone back. They actually baptize you forward, and they do it three times, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. It's kind of interesting. The Apostolic Church, when they baptize, they say, "In the name of Jesus." And they get that from the verse that says, you know, everything you do, do in the name of Jesus. So there's a little bit difference on immersion. Typically, when we baptize here in the Church of God, it's in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. We get that from Matthew 28:19, but you know, it's interesting when you look at that. So we practice immersion, because there's the most scriptural support. Matthew 3:16, "As Jesus was baptized, He went up out of the water. At that moment, heaven was open, and He saw the Spirit of God descend like a dove and light on Him." So if Jesus, when He was baptized, if He went out of the water, what did He first have to do? Go into it. And so we believe that. Mark 1:5, "The whole Judean countryside, all the people Jerusalem went out to Him, confessing their sins, they were baptized by Him in the Jordan River." And so why, if He was going to sprinkle them or pour on them, why would He do it in the river? And so again, we believe that immersion. Now, there's, can be a question raised. When should someone get baptized? In Scripture, people who were baptized, people were baptized immediately after they gave their hearts to the Lord, in Scripture. Acts 8:36, this is Philip and the Ethiopian eunuch. As they traveled along the road, they came to some water, and the eunuch said, "There's some water." You know, what can stand in the way of me being baptized? And so Philip said, "Nothing." So boom, he goes down and does it. Acts 16:33. "At the hour of the night, the jailer took them and washed their wounds; then immediately he and all his household were baptized." So we believe that a person should be baptized soon after they're saved. There are actually some of the churches of Christ, and we had any former churches of Christ experience? In some churches of Christ, they believe you're not saved until you get baptized. And so not all of them, but some churches of Christ, what they will do is they will always have a baptism full. Person comes down and says, "I confess my sins." They'll, they'll go baptize them. And matter of fact, I had a, there was a service that we had in Ohio, and man, the Lord was just moving like crazy. The Holy Spirit was, people were coming to the altar, and being broken out of their bondage. They were, they were getting saved, and we were woo, we were praising the Lord. It was, man, it was revival's breaking out, it was incredible. And I had a man actually come up front, and he said, "You were leading these people to hell." And I said, "Really? I thought we were doing the opposite." And he said, "If they don't get baptized, then they're not really saved." And I said, "Brother, we disagree on this, and so you need to step away." And if he wouldn't have, I would have thrown him out. Because he wasn't doing it in the name of the Lord. And he wasn't doing it orderly. And so we believe that a person should get baptized soon after they come to the Lord. Again, because you're making a public proclamation. You're making a statement. Another question that can be raised is, what if someone receives the Lord, but then dies before they're baptized? We believe if someone truly repents, they're going to spend eternity with the Lord. That's scriptural. It's preferable they're baptized, but if they're not, they're not going to get excluded. There's not going to be a sign. You know, when we get to, Pastor Mitch touched on this great, you know, when we get to heaven, we, in our mind, have all kinds of rules. I think when we get to heaven, we're going to say, "Well, God, we're under the rules." He'll say, "Did you have a relationship with my son? Yeah, come on in." But, but you had to wear your hair high and your dress is low. God says, "You all made that up." Well, you had to read King James only, and God says, "I don't know what you're talking about." And so remember, that baptism, we need to be baptized, we're commanded to be baptized, we should be baptized. But again, the important thing is that relationship with Jesus Christ. And where do you get that? Luke 23:43, there was a man hanging on a cross, and he said, "Jesus, remember Me when You get to My kingdom." Jesus answered him, "Truly, today, I, truly, I tell you, today You will be in the name of paradise." Was a thief on the cross baptized?
No.
No, no. But again, his heart, it was his heart, he was entering into a relationship with God. It's very, very interesting. I've had some situations where I've led people to the Lord, and literally minutes after that, they have died. And you know, their family was, he didn't get baptized, I said, his heart was baptized. His heart. Probably one of the most interesting situations was, happened in Illinois. There was a man, oh, I worked on him for years and years, and had a great relationship, just couldn't get any contracted states for cancer. And then I was visiting him in his home, and I begged him. I said, "You know, you're such a great man, but it's not going to get you to heaven. You got to know Jesus." And, and he called, and I was, I had a full day. And the Lord said, "I don't care what you do, go to His house." And His name was John. And so I grabbed my youth pastor, and I said, "We're going to go to John's house." And he said, "Man, I got so much to do." I said, "I know." "We're going to John's house." And so we went to John, he was lying in bed. And I said, "John," I said, "You need to get saved." He says, "That's why you're here." And I said, "John," I said, "Okay," I said, you know, "Will you receive Jesus Christ? Will you forgive your, ask Him forgiveness for your sins, and say you want that relationship with Him?" And he said, "Yes." And so we were just praising the Lord. And so we prayed with him and praised the Lord, and as we started to leave, we got outside the door, and they said, "Come back, come back." I said, "Okay, okay." So we came back, and John says, "I got to get baptized." And here was a man lying in bed, unable to move, and so I baptized him in sprinkling. And because that was very important to him. We then prayed again. We left. As we were getting into the car, they called us back, and he had passed away. Literally, minutes. I was holding him after I had sprinkled him and said, "I baptize you in the name." And what was so beautiful is when we got back inside the house, the same smile that he had when he accepted the Lord is the smile that he went to eternity with. That's good stuff. I can't wait to get to heaven and shoot John out. Why did you wait so long? Hey, we could have done it so much earlier. For those of you who are stubborn, stop it. Just give in to God, you make your pastor's job so much easier. And so praise God for that. So if someone's led to the Lord, and they die before they're baptized, they're going to get to heaven? Absolutely. It's here. It's here. But if you have time, it's very important, you should be baptized. Please don't hear that I'm knocking the importance down. You should be baptized. Write out the first six books of the Bible five times. Write out the memory verse. Baptism, day five. And after this lesson, there's only one lesson where it's a little light, and that's like in the third month, in the fourth week. So this week, you better be going, "Woo-hoo, this is easy." Because then we really start to get to work, because we cover prayer next week, which is good. Baptism, day five. What should we do after we're baptized? After we've been baptized, we can begin the process of drawing closer to God and knowing Him more. Some people, once they feel, once they've been baptized, they feel they've arrived at being as close to God as they can. Baptism is a public statement of a change that has taken place, but that change is a continual process, growing closer and closer to God every day that we're alive. Every day that we are in the Lord, we should be taking a step closer to Him. And that's what this is all about, is taking that one step closer. There'll be days when we stand still. There'll be days we take steps backwards. But the important thing is to keep stepping closer to Him. So after we've been baptized, never, never, never forget how God incre- So after we've been baptized, never, never, never forget how God incredibly loves you. First John three, one, this is a, we're going to be memorizing this verse later. But first John three, one is so powerful. Look at it, it says, "How great the love that the Father lashed upon us, that we should be called children of God." How great is that love, that we are His children? Incredible. So as we receive the love, we want to learn more and more about God. That's what, you know, when Pastor Mitch was preaching, I'm like, he's doing the discipleship. He's doing the discipleship. And it was so funny, the first sermon, if you remember, he preached about what I preached about the other week. I said, "What's going on?" And it just fit in perfect. He and I were at lunch Tuesday and I said, "Well, we're talking about..." He goes, "I just talked about that." I said, "I know." And I said, "Well, we're going to do this." He goes, "I want to talk about that tonight." I said, "Cool." And so you know, you get more than one person saying it, you're getting God saying it to you. So we want to learn more and more. And that's what Pastor Mitch was saying, we want to be so filled with Jesus that he just is squishing out of us. So we want to learn more and more. And the more we learn about God, the more we realize we have to learn. Our God is so big, we're going to spend eternity awed by Him. You know, people think heaven is, "Oh, I'm gonna sit down and play euchre all day." We're going to be in heaven so awed by God that we're just gonna be like, "Wow, cool. Holy, holy, holy." And then Jesus will come, "Wow, worthy is the Lamb." And that's what eternity is. And we can't fathom that. We can't understand that with these limited, mere mortal, finite minds. We can't. Think about the, a time when you were just wrapped up in the Holy Spirit and God was just right there with you. That pales in comparison to what eternity's gonna be. So you know, the problem, we, you know, we think, we shrink heaven down into what heaven would be like for us. Oh, well, heaven's gonna be, you know, we're high-fiving everyone or, you know, doing the little, I don't know what that was, but that's what we're doing. But heaven is where we're going to be with God. And we're just gonna be in awe of Him, in perfection. New, incorruptible, imperishable, immortal bodies, just with no pain, just nothing but love and light. Anyway, so after we've been baptized, we want to learn more and more about God. We want to learn more. Matthew five, six, "Blessed are those who hunger and thirst after righteousness; they will be filled." Here's what's so beautiful. The more we learn about God, the more we learn we don't know about God. Every time I take a step closer to God, it opens up a whole set of questions. And then I take another step and God gets a whole lot bigger. And I take another step and I'm going, "Man, incredible. Please, 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 don't ever think you've arrived." When you have God all figured out, you don't have a God, you have a figment of your imagination. If you know everything about God, you've got a really little bitty God. Our God is so big and so hungry and thirst to know Him more. And we shall be filled. What, I know we're just getting into this and it's new and it's riding out, you're going, you know, you're walking around like this for two days. I know that. My heart's crying for you. Is that as you get into this, I get to write out Scripture. Now I gotta write out with my left toe because I can't use my hands. And that's okay. That's okay. But I want to encourage you where you want to get into the Word of God. So, "Ooh, what can I write out today?" And that's that hunger and thirst more. As we learn more about God, we learn how God lives in us and we realize we're not the same people. We are people who belong to God, we're people who are the citizens of the Kingdom of God. So Pastor Mitch said something about that. And so we're to be separate from the world. First Peter two, nine, "We are a chosen people, a royal priesthood, a holy nation, God's special possessions, that you may declare the praise of Him who called you out of darkness in this wonderful light." Notice what that says, a chosen people. A chosen people, you have been selected by God. Now catch this, a royal priesthood. I gotta call the pastor, I can't talk to this person about God. "Oh, really? You are a royal priest? Well, I don't have the Bible degrees." I don't care. The man who was blind from birth, they said, "Okay, who is Jesus?" And you know what he said in John nine, twenty-five? "I really don't know. But I do know, I was once what? Blind, but now I can see." That's all you gotta tell them. Man, before Jesus, when I went to bed, I was wondering, "Is this all it is? What happens if I die?" When I got up in the morning, I didn't want to give in the morning because what was the purpose? But now that I have Jesus, when I go to bed, I say, "Now, I lay my head to sleep. I pray the Lord my soul to be." You see, there's a peace. And you wake up in the morning, when we are sold out disciples of Christ, we have a reason for being here. There's a reason for you to be here. And so know that, that you are a royal priest. Baptism is outward expression, inward change. We've heard that already, Pastor, I know. And it's, we're to live different, we're not to live like those in the world. People should see a difference in our lives. Ephesians five, eight, "You were once in darkness, but now you're light in the Lord; live as children in the light." People need to see God. We are living in a world that is trying to make it up as they go along. And this is what's amazing. People are self-identifying. You know, I don't feel like I'm a boy today, so I'm gonna self-identify as a girl. I was talking to someone the other day and I said, "You know what? I said, "How tall am I?" And they looked at me. I said, "I'm six foot four." "I self-identify as six foot four. So you can't tell me I'm not." Well, I know, I'm glad you're all seated, but when you measure me, I'm not six foot four. And that's it. If you have male parts, you're a male. If you have female parts, you're a female. I don't care what you identify with. The truth is the truth. And so people should be able to see us. And do they see Christ? Do we say, "I'm a Christian?" But do they see that? It's easy in church to praise the Lord, praise the Lord. But what about on Monday? Or Tuesday or Wednesday? So let people see you. He said, "I want to get baptized." You gotta wait. You gotta wait till you accept Him. All right. When we're baptized, it's not just our physical bodies that we're baptized. We're emotionally and spiritually baptized as well. And our attitudes, oh, oh, wait. About the third section, we talk a lot about attitude. Our attitudes should be different once we're baptized. Philippians two, five, "And our relationships with one another have the same mindset as Jesus Christ, Christ, Jesus." Number six, we're to think differently. We're to think different when we be baptized. Romans twelve, two, "Don't conform with the pattern of this world, but be transformed through the renewing of your mind; therefore you will be able to test and prove God's true and perfect will for you." Philippians four, eight, and remember, this is, and we're gonna be memorizing this verse. "Finally, brothers, whatever is true, whatever is noble, whatever is right, whatever is pure, whatever is lovely, whatever is admirable, whatever is excellent, think about these things." And so again, when we're baptized, our minds, our minds should be focusing on Jesus. "As our attitudes and thought processes change, so shall our behavior." A Christian lifestyle and values are different than the lifestyles and values of the world. Matthew five, thirteen, and fourteen, "You're the salt of the earth." We're the salt of the earth. But if salt loses saltiness, how can it be made salty? It's not good for anything else except to be thrown and trampled underfoot. You're the light of the world. A town built on a hill cannot be held. You are the salt and light of the world. You are here to change. You are here to make a difference. You're not just here to exist, put in your eighty years and then go and go to be with the Lord and then we have a funeral dinner in here for you and eat fried chicken. That's not what it's about. It's about making a difference. After, since we're now different, we may also have to have different friends or keep different company. Now, a lot of times people will say, "Well, I don't want to give up my friends because I'm witnessing to them." Well, you're witnessing to them by doing what you're doing. Sometimes when you come to the Lord, there's going to be some relationships that are broken. Sometimes when you make a stand for Jesus Christ, you can't stand with the other crowd. You can't do it. I'm not saying to be a jerk, you can be a witness, but remember, if you're being impacted by someone, be very, very careful. We need to be careful, we spend time, because they make a greater impact upon us than we realize. I told you all that story when I was a chaplain in Pomona, when I was serving as youth pastor. I was a chaplain concurrently. And I'd walk in there and I'd have my little suit on, my little briefcase, a little chapel blogger. I'd walk in there and I'd meet someone, I'd say, "How are you today?" And they'd say, "Oh, my back hurts." I'd say, "Oh, okay, well, bless you." You know, and I'd keep walking and met the next person, "How are you?" "Oh, my knee hurts, Uncle Arthur's got it." "Oh, okay, I'm sorry to hear that." Meet the staff member, "How are you doing?" "Oh, these patients are crazy." And I'm like, "Oh, I'm sorry." I'd get to my office and they'd say, "How are you?" I'd say, "Oh, man, my back hurts and my knee hurts." And man, everybody's crazy here. I mean, it rubs off on you. It rubs off. Well, we should be the ones rubbing off on them. We should be the ones. So after we're baptized, we may not be able to spend time with some people. Psalms one, one, "Blessed is the one who does not walk in step with the wicked or stand in the way that sinners take or sit in the company of mockers." So sadly, there have been those who've been baptized and simply returned to status quo and there wasn't a difference. There have been those who've been baptized, I've told people, you know what, I don't think you should get baptized now. "Who are you?" I'm just saying what Scripture says. Baptism should make a difference. It's huge, it's big. Baptism is special. And it's a public statement that we're different. So what key point are you taking? How are you gonna apply it to your life? Write out the first six. Six. Books of the Bible, seven. Seven. Remember, seven's a perfect number. Write out the memory verse, seven times. And then make sure you pray how big God is. Questions? Yes, Joel?
On YouTube, there are videos that have the books of the Bible in Psalms.
Yeah.
And I thought it'd be fun if we all did that.
Have you heard me sing? And that's a great way to do it. It's a great, great way to do it. Would we have someone who is brave enough to volunteer to lead us in Psalms? Let me work on that. Let me work on, maybe we can have Pastor Donna make a little jazz. You know, maybe we can have her do that. But that is a good way.
That's how I learned that.
You know, because I found my thrills where? I thought I was talking to the church. Now you all are saying sanctified and loved the Lord, but you remember that nineteen fifty song.
I know.
You don't? All right. That was a popular song. Singing does help us, that's a great point, so excellent. Any other questions, comments?
What can you tell us about holy water?
Holy water, they, it comes to us from the tradition of Catholicism and there's not a lot of difference between Episcopalian and Catholicism. And Lutheran is kind of a Martin Luther Catholicism, Episcopalian to a degree. What actually they believe is that that holy water was water that the disciples had touched. And then they believe that that is the continuation. So holy water, they believe, is water that has been blessed. And so just like in Catholicism, they believe that when Catholics take the communion, they believe they're eating the body of Jesus and drinking His blood. And that's transubstantiation. So it's kind of the same as that water becomes water that Jesus walked on, water that is that living water kind of thing. So.
But for you, as the baptizer to you, is the water just water?
To me, that's a good question. To me, the water is the medium, the water is the means. The act is the holy. Is that a person is saying, "I am making a public statement that I belong to Jesus Christ and day five, that my life is going to change. And I'm going into that watery grave." To me, the water represents, and we talked about cleansing the sins and we're raised up in the watery grave. That's kind of what I believe about it. Any other questions?
I always wanted to be baptized in like a traditional way.
Sure, sure.
In a stream or something like that. Instead of, you know, I was done in the church.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think to me, it'd be more like Jesus to be baptized in a stream.
And there's nothing wrong with that. You know, millions of people, and that's probably not an exaggeration, get baptized in the Jordan River. And that's, you know, a dream of theirs. We could have a rippling water baptism sometime, that'd be kind of cool. So, you know, yeah. All right, yes?
Have you ever heard this saying, that if the baby dies and then they're not baptized, that they don't have any dental?
Yes, but that's biblically inaccurate. It's inaccurate. And what we get in Second Samuel, when David's baby died, when David, the baptist of his first baby died, and David was mourning, had sackcloth and ashes and wasn't eating the disciples. His court said, "You gotta eat." And the baby died. And what David says is, "Nothing's gonna bring him back to the baby, but I'm going to go to him." So we in the Church of God believe there's an age of accountability that, you know, if a little one dies, then they go to the pew of the Lord.
I feel that was like an old thing for Roman Catholics.
It gets into Catholicism and purgatory was invented by Pope Greg in the fifteen hundreds because at that time, the Catholic Church was running out of money. And so what happened was Pope Greg said, "How can we fill our coffers? How can we do that?" Well, what we'll do is we'll say, "Hey, if you had a loved one who was a turkey, all you gotta do is give money, because they're gonna go to purgatory, they're not gonna go to hell, but hell is very biblical, is..." So they're in purgatory, and if you don't want to be in purgatory more, give more money. So purgatory is not biblical. We don't find any examples that came out of Pope Greg the Great. You okay? I know we're going to...
I just can't believe they're in limbo.
Right, right, we don't either, we don't either.
I feel like I can't believe that.
Yep, we don't believe that either. And it's not script, again, if you come to me and say, "Well, you know what? This is what happens," I'm gonna say, "Where is it in the Bible? Where is it in Scripture? We're people of the word." Pastor Mitch said, "Word-minded." I was like, "I don't like that, I'm gonna put it in the book." I didn't hear that earlier. So word-minded, use that word. We are word-minded people. Hang on to that. All right, I'm gonna bless you all and your fingers. Oh, sure.
It was actually on the last lesson, the last, after page five, that we're, you had the extra, "How do you know?" And Proverbs six, sixteen, it says there's six things. But I have King James and I have another one that I look up and I don't understand. But what do you say they are?
It tells you in there. Well, are you talking about the different wording?
Yes.
On the King James?
What are the six, the seven things that are detestable?
Pride, then pride and see what, those are the eyes. Yeah, that's pride.
Proud look.
Proud look is, is, lion tongue, proud look is pride.
Hands that shed innocent blood.
Right.
And then...
Murder.
...desires wickedness.
Right.
Okay. But now like, it's not the movie. Because I asked my daughter and it'll all come up too, you know, they had slugs.
The movie Seven?
Yes, it's not, it's kind of, but when you look it up in the dictionary, it lists those. Greed.
Sludnie, slaw, those kind of things. Remember...
What I read, it says that, like, well, basically, they all are covered under some of those things.
Sure, sure.
But that's not the seven.
And remember, Hollywood is not Scripture.
Yes, I know.
You know, because Hollywood...
But that's what I try to explain to my kids, like, when they start going, they go to those movies and stuff. I said, "But it touches it." So you need to know the difference. But like, like all those Stephen King, I'm not into those anyway, but I'm just saying...
Don't believe any of those.
No, but it has a background, that's where they get it. Now you need to know what it really says.
And remember what sage's job is to do. Sage's job is to take Scripture and twist it just enough. And that's what he did with Adam and Eve. Did God really say this? And so always go back to the Word of God. The King James Version, I love the King James Version, I grew up on the King James Version. The King James Version language is a little dated.
Yes.
And so go to another, good.
Then I have a concordance also, but I'm just saying, it was still confusing. Some are too liberal though, I think. That's why I like the reading. That's why I like to read them. Well, Dad, our Dad was a biggie on, "Don't add or take away."
Right, right, right.
Okay, so, but, I mean, I don't always... So I read it out of duty.
Sure, sure.
But, you know, I know there are other translations, and I have a concordance also.
This Sunday, we're actually going to tell you exactly what sin is in Scripture.
Okay.
So you gotta come this Sunday. Or watch on YouTube if you're unable to be here. But we're gonna actually take, there's five Greek... I'm giving you a Sunday sermon. There's five Greek words for sin. And we're actually going to take those apart in Sunday's sermon. Because we're talking about forgiveness. And before you can be forgiven, you gotta know what you gotta be forgiven of.
And then, just like you said last week, like, what might be a sin to you might not be to someone else.
You're previewing our sermon Sunday. No, you're giving us a trailer. Yes, yes, yes. So, great question. Great, great, great question. Great question.
I just want to make sure I kinda had the right idea.
Yes. And if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to give me a call. We'll work through things. Do I know everything? Absolutely not.
Pastor, I could ask you anything.
He was joking. Because you scared him. And I said, "No, that's sissy. We love sissy." No, no, no. But I praise the Lord. You're in the Word of God. And because the Word of God, sometimes, we read and we say, "What in the world does that mean?" And if, when we will pray about it, and we're gonna be talking about that in two weeks, when we really pray about it, God will start to reveal things, and we'll be like, "Wow."
See, that's two. I always pray for wisdom and understanding. He will get it to you.
Yeah. You know, it's Pastor Mitchell's last sermon. I've read the Bible. This is my 21st year of reading through the Bible. And I never, ever caught that Jesus said to the disciples, who Pastor Mitchell did such a phenomenal job of pointing out, they're with Jesus, they've been with Him for three years, they saw the miracles. They did miracles. Disciples did miracles. Luke 10, they cast out demons, all that. But He told them, unless they change. Man, so I need to be changing. And we, too, we need to be changing to be more like Him, to be taking that step closer. And the Word of God helps us to do that change. That's why you're writing Scripture. So when your finger's hurt, you say, "Say, get out of my finger," and keep doing it. All right, I'm gonna let you all go. Yes, sir?
Week tomorrow, last night, Matthew 16:24. I just kind of... And Jesus said to His disciples, "If anyone desires to come after Me, let him deny himself and take up his cross and follow."
Yep.
Is it, you mean to come after Him as in seeking Him?
To have a relationship with Him. If anyone is to have a relationship, we have to deny ourselves. And then take up the cross means that there's work. Wouldn't it be wonderful if we just said, "Oh, Jesus, forgive my sins," and then we could, didn't have to do any work?
Yeah, I took it in two different ways. And I just, you know, how it actually meant for sure.
For anyone who has been married or who is married, I want to say a statement, and you're gonna say, "Really? Marriage is hard work." Okay, I'm glad you're all sitting down. And so what would happen if, when the couple said, you know, "Do you take him to be your lawfully wedded wife? Do you take her to be your lawfully wedded wife?" And what would have happened if they just said, "Yes," and then quit working? And so marriage is work. Relationships are work. Even being friends is work. Because has you ever...